All right, next question comes from a concerned citizen. We'll start again at the far end with Henry. How do you? How do your policies help me to achieve the American dream? One minute, Henry, go.
What is the American dream? Exactly. Not socialist.
This says one minute. Let him respond.
I asked you, what do you think is so good about the American dream?
You're asking us?
In this opportunity, in this very narrow window, is misplaced. Because ultimately, the current system doesn't care about you at all.
Arpa, it is your turn. You have one minute, go.
I will give you guys living wages in order for your children to have education. Guys, there will be less working hours for your children, so they can take time to go on education and build themselves up and achieve that.
And can that answer the question?
Okay, and moving on. Stella, how would? What makes? Oh, sorry. Uh, what our question was? How do your policies help me to achieve the American dream? Anonymous American citizen.
My platform includes education, and I believe that the increasing education is successful to all citizens and will help citizens achieve more in life. My platform also includes work safety. I think that work safety allows people to improve their lives and improve what their future will be throughout minimum wages and work safety.
Would you like to respond?
I have a question, actually.
Okay.
You all have? Yeah, both of you. Both of you, actually. So you're both talking again about increasing education and providing for decreased work hours for workers. How are you gonna pay for that?
Do you not want education to be?
How are you paying for it? I'm asking if you're planning.
You're a socialist.
At least I have a plan.
Wow.
What is your plan? How are you gonna pay for this?
I think that, um, increasing education.
How are you gonna pay for it?
Let her finish.
Exactly. Taxes. I'm actually, I'm gonna increase taxes, and I'm gonna redirect where taxes are going to.
But doesn't that make you? By your definition?
No.
Okay, remember, politics is difficult. Decisions have to be made, and we can't make it personal. Ash, how would you like to respond? What would you? What are your policies that are going to help an American achieve the American dream?
So an aspect of that answer that I failed to see in any other candidates is what is the American dream? I mean, Henry touched on it, but he was just wrong. So I think the American dream, you know, is the ability to progress and, you know, the availability of opportunity. And the way I would increase this and provide for this American dream to be possible is kind of doing what Stella said, you know, increasing education. Because as you increase education, you increase the skills of the workers and, you know, their ability and their value. And that makes them able to progress in society. And I think that's what our country really needs. I think that's what it means to be American.
I think we need to address the fact that Ash told us that workers have value. And throughout, he's saying? No, no, let me, let me get to it. I think that he is. I think that's what he's doing. I think he's portraying by his commodities. He's saying that education will help you guys go to factory to help Charlie. I think he's portraying you guys.
I think it helps them.
Hold on, okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. We'll take a question here from the audience. Uh, make your question director. Owner Charlie has a, owner Charlie has a question.
Stella, in response to that, uh, do you not believe that workers with more skill deserve to be paid more?
I do believe that, of course.
Well, that's what he said.
So isn't that their goal?
I'm saying that he specifically said that it increases their value in the workforce. I think that he's saying that they're, he's making them commodities to the workforce. He's saying that their only value in education is to help, is to help the workforce.
Okay. All right, hold on. Okay, I'm gonna.
Why we're learning is so that we can one day become better workers and make more money.
I agree. I agree with what you're saying. I just think the way that Ash portrayed you guys.
Clearly, I'm not as skilled as Savannah Guthrie here. So I'm gonna have to try to get better control and moderate this a little bit more. She's a little better at moderating debates here than I am. Now, I, I can't read this next question because it's a personal attack on a candidate by a citizen, so I'm gonna skip that question. What's that? Would you like?
It was personally attacked.
You were personally attacked. Okay, would you like to share a story?
Yes.
Okay, Carter, go ahead.
Two candidates.
Oh, God.
And then is there a question or anything?
There's a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Carter.
Explain this story. My question is, would you like to apologize? Arpa, start with you. In the corner over there. You asked, or I was asking about jobs and what jobs I should have.
That's not what we're saying.
You should just go and gamble because you're. I was like, okay. So then I went to Stella.
No, no.
Let, let him finish. Let him finish.
I'm sure you're about to be fine after what Stella said. She was saying, Stella, what were we talking about? I don't know. Tell them what we're talking about. We're talking about, uh, like pretty much same thing. Jobs for me, and she was gonna cut jobs in half, and I was asking questions. And she said, go back to where you came from.
All right, we have to be careful.
I would like to respond to.
Arpa.
I would like to respond to the accusation. I would say the, the people in his little group were asking me how many days they're gonna work. And I said six days, and on the Sundays, you guys can go to church and spend time with your family. He said, I'm an immigrant. I don't believe in church. So I go, so I said, you can spend your time doing anything else, like gambling. And he said, you can gamble if you'd like to spend your Sunday like that. And then he said.
I don't understand how this relates to policies for the Americans. So I'm gonna go ahead and move on. We're gonna move on. Nope, we're moving on.
That's extreme.
No, no. False accusations.
You, you're, you're claiming this as an example of false accusations. Okay, fair enough. Stella, would you like to respond? Nope.
I told.
Stop, 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 stop. Stella, quickly.
I told Curtis, go home.
All right. No, no. Okay, here we go. No.
All he asked for was an apology.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. So, Arpa. This question is directed at you. Each candidate will have 30 seconds to respond after you have one minute. Arpa, if you are wealthy enough to go through with your promise of first aid in every factory corner, aren't you necessarily? Aren't you necess? Aren't you necessarily a wealthy person who exploits others? I'm only worried about this possible hypocrisy. Arpa, how would you like to respond to that?
Don't pull someone out on their.
What? I just know it's Audrey.
Oh, she took her hat off you.
I worked hard. I worked my way up. I did not use these corrupt ways that all the factory workers, like Charlie, because he has way too much money. I have enough money to supply everyone, and I don't care about losing this money to helping new workers.
30 seconds. Do you have anything you want to say?
I, I, nobody is actively explaining how they're gonna pay for any of this. Okay?
Stella, anything to respond before we go to the crowd? Okay, no response. Ash?
I would just like to say that the way that Arpa put it was wrong. She said that Charlie came about as wealth dishonestly, and I think there's, you know, uh, there's a big distinction between honest graph and dishonest graph. And a lot of people categorize the actions of business leaders as dishonest when in reality, they're taking the most advantage they can out of their situation, which is an honest characteristic of Americans. And in the process of doing right by themselves, they do right by others in the country. You know, Charlie provides jobs for a lot of people. He fixes up the country, pays taxes, he funds projects, and all of this is done for the collective good.
All right. You had your chance. Now we have to move on.
You've been the mayor for the last 25 years, and you still don't know the struggles of the working class.
Riley's question. Riley has a question. We're gonna go to Riley in the audience.
Yeah.
Riley, fire away.
So I wanna go back to an old point. Uh, Stella, you said that you're gonna, uh, improve education, like make it more widely available?
Yes.
And also increase minimum wage, right?
Yeah, I said that.
So both of those increase the costs for both the poor and the rich. Because poor are gonna be taxed more for education, right? Uh, let me finish.
I don't think we need to, honestly, I know what I'm saying.
So if you increase minimum wage, if I do work my way up through the American dream or whatever?
Yeah.
So I've already paid my taxes for education and all that, right? So now that I'm up there as a richer person, I'm now having to pay more minimum wage, which doesn't that kind of defeat the point of working my way up if I'm paying more?
I don't think you asked a really good question. Um, I never, I never said I was gonna increase taxes. I specifically said I'm gonna redirect taxes. So your whole question of minimum.
What does that mean?
So, hold on, hold on. That's a fair, that's a fair follow-up. So what does it mean to redirect taxes? Will you clarify that? Hold on. Let her answer, and then you can talk.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Um, like I said, I'm gonna redirect the taxes to more like valuable aspects of, of the American system. Like education. I will get to it in a second, Henry. Oh, my gosh.
Hey, 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 hey.
Sorry, sorry. I'll take taxes away from specific areas, like once that fund businesses. I think that taking it away from like the funding of major businesses, like not all of it, obviously, but like a small portion of it to go to the better of American citizens will be beneficial for all.
So I'm hearing higher business taxes to benefit all Americans.
Facts.
Okay. All right, no, hold on. Moving to the next one. Hold on, we'll get to, you've already talked. Okay, then I, this is a question that came in through the anonymous. That we'll, we'll clarify, we'll come back to it. Maybe another question, Adam. Um, this question came in through our, our wonderful anonymous question forums, uh, system here. The question is, we'll, we'll start this time at Ash and work our way down to Henry. How do you plan to protect the people on the occasion that they are injured and unable to work? How can you ensure that their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness is still present?
So I'm not gonna provide a direct answer to this question because it's a hard one to answer. Uh, something that I talk to a lot with the factory workers is that any solution that isn't thought through and planned accordingly is nothing more than rushed. And I don't think that's, you know, what we want. So I'd go back to the plank of my platform, which is, you know, discourse between the workers and the factory owners about these issues and about increasing their ability to have protection because they're more valuable. And I'm not treating them as a commodity. I'm treating them as a person with value. I think there's a difference. And, yeah.
Quick follow-up question. Is your, your choice of t, of shirt today a part of your propaganda for this?
Oh, propaganda might not be the right word. I think it's a good display of personality.
Okay. Stella, you have a minute to answer this question.
All right, I'm gonna start off by saying that I think that we know why Ash has been in office for 25 years. He is giving broad answers to police people, but giving no real solutions. I think that we should compensate workers that are being, that are being harmed in the workplace. They're putting their lives on the line to benefit the people of America, and they are being injured. And so because of that, they should be compensated for their actions.
Arpa, would you like to?
I am very similar with Stella. I believe that if they get injured in the factory, I think they should get paid for leave and act, and have their hospital bills and everything paid by the factory owners since they are the ones responsible for the workers getting hurt. Because they don't make sure that these machines are safe for the workers. Yeah.
Good. Uh, any other audience questions at this point? Okay. Next question. Do I need to edit that board?
No, it's all going swimming.
Is it, is it?
It's appropriate.
This, this question is directed at Stella. We will go from Stella to Arpa to Henry, back to Ash, and they can respond after this. Stella, I thought you supported peaceful strikes. Why does your padlet say no justice? Would you like to respond to that?
No justice, no peace.
So, so you're supporting violent strikes if workers can't get justice?
No, that's not what I mean.
Go ahead, Stella. You wanna clarify? Go ahead and clarify.
He's taking my little picture.
Stella, 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 stick to the facts. And how would you like to address what is being said?
Blasphemy, honestly.
Are you not saying these things that are being said about you?
I am saying that I support people protests. That's what I'm saying.
So what does the picture mean?
The picture is a picture of someone protesting. I'm against no peace.
Okay.
Now that we're talking about strikes, as mayor, I will support all labor, labor unions, and I will make sure that the factory owners cannot fire you guys for being a part of the union.
All right, I'll go after that.
Um, I will find the factory workers every, if they disobey these laws. And so, and they love their money, okay?
So let's just say I sleep on the job, and I get fired, but I'm part of the union, so can be fired.
Well, if it, that you can't be fired for being in the union if you are sleeping, and that's your own problem. I, we will have little, help little people come in and look and see what happens.
That's more money you're gonna be spending on the.
I will come in, be myself. As the mayor, as the mayor will be the investigator. I, I, I.
Henry, would you like to address this?
I don't get bribes. He's asking about bribery, guys. That means he's thinking about bribery. He will take bribes, and he does not care about the workers.
Okay. Okay. Henry, your chance to address this. Your chance to address this, Henry.
I, I don't totally think that unions are one of the best tools that labor has for shifting power back into their hands from the factory owners. And so I'm wholly in support of unions. I think unions are great. I think strikes are great. I don't think we have enough.
Why do you ask me about bribery if you weren't thinking about that?
Because I suspect that having money, you like having money.
Ash, would you like to talk about strikes or collective bargaining or unions?
Uh, I don't think it's a question.
I'm sorry. You're a socialist.
The question was originally, back to our question here. It was directed at Stella. The question was, I thought you were a supporter of peaceful strikes, and it implied that she did not. Do you support peaceful strikes, unions, collective bargaining?
I mean, I feel like those are all three issues, and you can't really group them together. I, I do support peaceful. You know, I don't think strikes is a good word.
No, you have to let him talk.
I think I, I like, I prefer the word discourse because I think that that is, you know, how we find success. Uh, take a look, for example, this padlet board, okay? There's no actions being done on this padlet board, but I sure am learning a lot about these different candidates. I mean, there's hashtag cancel Arpa, cancel Stella. Stella's inciting violence. Henry is kind of just out of the running at this point. And I think that just goes to show, you know, how valuable words can be, and I don't think there's always the need for action.
Okay.
What?
You can say, you, you can, can attack him.
Can I respond?
You would like, if you would, yes, since this question was directed at you, you can have a response.
I've seen a lot of slander in my padlet right now, and I don't appreciate it. Ash just said that words matter and that action doesn't. He is not, everything he's saying, his platform is based on nothing. He's not gonna implement any action.
Okay. Charlie, would you like to respond as the factory owner here?
To?
Well, you look, you had your hand up a second ago. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Good. The next question, this is a good one. And we're gonna start back at the other end with Henry on this question. Henry, do you plan on doing anything with income tax? And then the follow-up question, I have a second one, so I'll go after this. Okay, so go ahead.
Um, yeah, aggressive tax factor, specifically, redistribute the income taxes. Taxing the rich heavily, not corporations, because corporations' tax burden ultimately trickle down to consumers, making them more expensive. And increase, you know, price of living. So no, taxes directly on the wealthy to support better public goods than infrastructure for poor people.
Okay, Arpa, on income tax, do you plan on doing anything with income tax?
I also, um, am on taxing the rich because they have so much money and they.
So you're in favor of progressive income tax?
Yes, I'm a progressive.
Which we do not have in Overland Park in 1900.
Progressive income tax, because with these taxes, they still have a lot of money. These, these factory workers and business people can still run their factories after getting highly taxed.
Fair enough. Stella?
What's the question?
Income tax, do you support on doing anything with an income tax here in Overland Park 1900?
Of course I do.
You wanna get into any specifics on that?
I'm just asking if I support it. I do support it.
Okay, and what would it look like under your policies?
Um, taxing the rich more.
How much more?
Um, I think that.
What do you think the maximum tax?
I think that you should stop talking. I mean, that wasn't part of the action that the person.
Stella's just kind of thinking about it for a little while?
I, next question.
Okay. Ash, would you, what do you think about income tax?
I would like to, you know, take a page out of the notebook of my competitors and, you know, attack them instead of the question. So none of you guys, I don't even think know what a tax bracket is. I don't think you have a plan.
I know exactly what a tax bracket is.
Okay, what do you, what do you think the top tax bracket should be? 95%? 95%?
If I was making $10 billion a year, we can do just as well.
Factory workers, things are about to develop for you. A lot of money coming in.
Factory workers in Overland Park. The factory owners are making $100 billion a year.
Yeah, boy.
I feel like that's a little excessive, a little extreme. But, you know, props to you for being the only one who could like provide an answer. Even if it was terrible, like, good job.
I think like 40%.
That's kind of what the current is.
Well, there is no current in 1900. Current isn't 2020, that'd be true. How much?
45%.
Uh, Adam, we haven't heard from you in about 10 minutes. Would you like to say something?
You said, you said.
You're right. 95%. Now, here's the thing. If the American dream is all about the self-made man and going from the bottom and working right up the economic ladder. If we as factory workers were to find ourselves in a position where we were working up the economic ladder, why would we vote for you if that's just gonna? Voting for you means when we get to our successful position, we take all of our money away. I feel like by having to take a high income tax on the top bracket, you're completely eliminating the American dream as people aren't as able to move up the economic ladder as well. And then you're just creating a stagnant economy where no one can move up or down in terms of their personal wealth.
Answers.
And in addition, that American dream, that ability to move up in the ranks is what's attracting immigrants to the new country. They, they're coming, the opportunity to move up higher. So if this was eliminated, we wouldn't have immigrants coming to America, which fuel things like, for instance, the, the railroad, the whole backbone of our nation.
Okay. All right, good question.
Wait, that was a question?
Ash? I just, he, he's challenging the fact that the, what, how do you respond to people who would say increasing taxes on the wealthy decentivizes the very American dream that, that Adam believes?
So I don't see why it's worth going over this again.
Okay, Ash, would you like to respond?
Yes, so I think Adam put it exceptionally well. I think people don't come to America for handouts, they come for opportunity. And if you can't grow and you're salty about it, that doesn't mean you should take 95% of the wealth from the richest. Like, I don't think that's how the world works. I don't think that's how it should work. That's kind of what Henry's trying to promote. I think we should honestly just like take his chair away and like send him into the audience if you're asking my opinion. Just think that's how it should be.
Middle two candidates, Arpa or Stella? Do you feel like your plan will promote hard work, American dream, or with taxes?
I do. I believe that I am directly against that, with 95%, because I feel like.
So you're saying you're a compromise?
Like having money.
You're a compromise. I'm gonna fire the next question, then we'll come to you, Charlie.
Sure, that's why. I'm sure that's why.
Okay, this time we, this time we'll start at Stella, and we'll go Stella, Ash, Henry, and then Arpa. Okay? The question is, would you support a silver standard which could cause inflation, prices rising? Stella?
Uh, yeah, I do. I think that inflation can be good in some respect, but I also don't think that like a lot of inflation is good.
Ash?
So the question is, would I support a silver standard?
Yeah, would you support inflation in a silver standard?
I mean, I think it's kind of a double-edged sword when it comes to like having a silver standard and also increasing wages. And I think you're stabbing the sword into the, you know, the business owner's heart. Because when you increase inflation and also ask for an increase in wages, it means that these people are getting double, triple the amount that they're intended to be paid for not having valuable skills. And their jobs are, you know, they're able to be replaced by staff. So sometimes I think that you need to, you know, pick a side. Do you want higher wages or do you want to learn more? And I think that the side that the American people should choose is to learn more and be more valuable.
I fail to see how being paid three times as much is a problem.
Who pays you three times as much? The industry owners. And why do you deserve that amount of money?
Because you deserve it just because you're a human being, just like them.
Okay, but they're a very skillful human being. He has a cowboy hat.
Not as skillful.
He has a computer. You don't. He can get on campus. You can't.
I'm not less valuable than him for not having.
You're not less valuable when it comes to monetary worth. Yes, you are.
Arpa, continue on. Would you like to address the silver standard? Yes or no?
I, I would. I do. I do support the silver standard because I believe that inflation will help the workers get more money, and I feel like that is beneficial to them for how they live their life.
All right, so, um, what is your? We'll, we'll start down at Henry and work our way back down the, the line here. The question is, what is your stance on food, meat inspection laws, clean water, and standards with like an FDA to inspect medicines and ingredients there are?
I think ultimately it kind of agrees with the current standard, which food and medicine are being held in terms of their evaluation of safety. And the fact that a nation can be civilized to this, exact to this upon themselves and people is frightening. And honestly, I don't understand how this could have happened. So I'm definitely in favor of reinspection, medical regulations, and standards. I also think, I also believe that in some, that people who develop these substandard products should be held accountable for that. The fact that they've basically been feeding people this for the past 30 years.
How would you respond to the person that says this is an overreach of government, it's not government's role, it's gonna cost too much in taxation to do all this?
I'm, I'm saying tank it by finding people who've been feeding people this stuff for the past 30 years.
Okay, so fines for the violators.
Um, as mayor, me and my team will be going to every single factory and make, inspecting all these factories and getting inspection laws, sanitary laws, that.
Proposing a lot of very expensive policies.
I'm gonna be the one that's going and doing.
I'm so far you've not disclosed any of your taxes or wages.
Neither have you.
At least I have.
Charlie, did you have something? I skipped over you earlier.
I believe at this point.
Make, uh, owner Charlie.
You're implementing, you must have more money than I did.
She does, actually. You don't know. Are you assuming that she has not a lot of money? Because I'm a woman.
That is not what I'm assuming. I'm, I'm assuming that.
What are you saying?
I'm not.
I was wrong, guys.
I personally would not be able to afford all of these implements that you are.
You are supposed to be able to wealthy.
So you must be 99%.
Maybe 99%.
No, I just know how to work my money.
How many billions?
Stella, what would you like to say on meat inspection laws and FDA, Food and Drug Administration, monitoring ingredients and health standards, water and sanitation?
Love, protect food safety and meat inspection. I think that the current standard is terrible. And this has all been under Ash, by the way, for the past 25 years.
That's a really funny question.
By the way, I think that, um, we should, uh, implement. They keep interrupting me absurd, actually. Um, I think we should.
Okay. We'll, we'll come back to you. Ash, would you like? Ash, would you like to address this issue on FDA food standards sanitation?
I think we should have a committee that goes to these, you know, these plants and provides, like a, like a YouTube food review, you know? And I think that knowledge is power. And I think that if you think that this meat is unhealthy and bad food, you don't eat it. And you know what that's gonna do? It's gonna promote change because necessity drives innovation. And when these factory owners have the necessity to improve their product, that's what they're gonna do.
So that seems like a liberty-driven approach. The in, the individual makes the choice.
And I don't know where these guys are pulling the money from for their plans. I think Arpa's probably a secret billionaire. Stella's just kind of like making up words and Henry just wants to like take it from everybody.
Henry, would you like to respond?
I would just like to ask, how do people produce to know what's in their foods so they can know whether or not to buy it?
Or do you support labeling?
Do you support labeling?
Mandated labeling by the government?
I mean, that's a tough subject, but. I think to answer Henry's question, I don't have to talk about meat labeling. I could just, you know, provide the evidence that is articles being written about. You slap your head.
Yes, I did.
But just like providing the knowledge and the open knowledge for people to know what is in their food.
I don't know about labeling meat, that's physical.
Go ahead Stella.
I'd like to reiterate that.
If there are any other questions.
Ash's only solution is talking. Like, there's no, there's no action being taken in the freezer. If there's no action being taken, it's because he has no plans. He's trying to sell you with his little American shirt. And honestly, it should not work because he's not gonna implement anything to help any of you guys. Charlie, he's speaking baloney to you. He's speaking baloney to everyone else in this room, especially immigrants.
Immigrants really?
You're an immigrant, you should not support Ash. Yeah.
Alright, alright. Lisa, would you like to ask a question? You've been quiet the whole hour.
As you were saying about people making their own choices and deciding not to eat meat. As of right now, people are working in verbal conditions. Their kids are also working on a position. And there's no education. There's also low, um, opportunities for any sanitary, like or hygiene, anything, you know? And so if we also eliminate good sanitation, that's just not gonna work for people because they, they, they just have the, the opportunity to survive these conditions.
Okay. Would anyone like to respond to Lisa?
I mean.
I think that was a direct.
It was, I, yeah, I do see it as an impact and not a, not a question. You know, there's not really anything for me to say other than to reiterate my points, which I obviously disagree with. So I think we can move on.
Carter, Carter.
Opportunities that America offering for me.
Say that again?
As an immigrant, so coming.
Immigrant factory worker.
I would love to.
Okay.
As a immigrant factory worker, what opportunities are for you with no education?
Okay, no education. We'll start here with Ash. Ash wants to respond and then we'll move down the line.
First and foremost, I would like to apologize on behalf of Stella and Arpa because they still have not, you know, put forward that apology for their xenophobia. And I'm honestly just sorry and I'm sorry that you had to be a victim of that. And I would like to extend them the opportunity to apologize when it's their turn to answer, but it's not, it's mine. So my answer to the question would basically be that we provide you the opportunity to get a better education. So you're twenty-six years old, you know, it wouldn't exactly be right to send you to elementary school. We can't exactly do that. But we can teach you trades, basic history, basic language, you know, basic education. An example of this that you provided when you talked with me was the opportunity for night school, and that's definitely something we could look into. And then you also have the ability to build your skill set when it comes to learning more trades.
Stella, how would you like to respond to this?
I think that.
Under your administration, opportunities present.
Under my administration. Ash. I think that under my administration, once again, I support education. I think that education is available to everyone, not just elementary schools, but also like Ash is saying, trade school and abilities, the abilities for you, the ability for you to be able to go out and learn more of your skills by working in a work environment. If maybe you think you're too old to, uh, go back to school.
So would you pay for all of this with higher taxes? Would you, would this be free to the citizens that come here, whether they're?
What am I paying for?
Education.
Okay, well, I already said that like nine times. I'm just gonna redirect to faculty.
From where?
Dude, I've answered his question like fifty times.
That's a lot of money.
I told him to go home, to his house.
Arpa, Arpa, please.
I also support education. I would, I would if people asked to make a night school, trade school, anything. And I do apologize if you told my words the wrong way, but I did not mean for you to say that you were a gambler because you're, because you're an immigrant. But I would say you could spend your day gambling on Sundays instead of going to church if that's what you please.
Okay, so you're offering some liberty is what you're trying to say. Okay, alright, and Henry?
Currently, what America offers to immigrants is the possibility to live better than where you live in your home country. But also the possibility to end up living in a domebell tenement in like lower east side of Manhattan for the rest of your life until you die of cholera at the age of thirty-two. So.
So what are you gonna do to fix that?
I would propose to offer a better life, period.
Oh, like how?
Quality.
Money for anyone? Free money? redistribution wealth?
How much money do I get?
Everyone gets a job?
Gainful employment. At a fair rate. At the expense of the people who have more money than they should.
And apparently tenement acts and sanitation laws and?
I don't think anybody deserves to live like that. Anybody, under any worries you're saying?
Question came in here to the hat, so I'm gonna, and then we'll come back to you, Lisa, since you've already had a chance here. The question is, we're gonna go back to Ash to start this here. How are you going to handle the, the present corruption in political bosses? Their supporters and bribes?
It's a great question. So my first argument is that I have the most ability out of any candidate to handle it. I have twenty-five years in office and with that has come connections and experience. I wouldn't be a newcomer coming in and trying to convince these people why I'm basically political enemies with as all the other candidates are. So I would have, you know, I'd be able to talk to them as friends and as colleagues and show them the other people's side of the issue.
Okay.
And then.
Okay, that's right, we'll move on to the next one. Stella, we're running out of time here. Stella, go. Bribes, political bosses, the political machines. How are you, how are you gonna handle all of this?
I, I'm not corrupt. Ash may have experience, but I think, I don't know how everyone's missing the point here. Ash has done absolutely nothing except, except speak little words and try to win your hearts over with his little American heart.
So you're saying you take no bribes? Okay, Arpa, go.
Ash is saying all this stuff with his little connections and stuff, but he has done, with his connections, he has put you guys into corrupt everything. You guys have a terrible work position, terrible hours, terrible sanitary laws for the past twenty-five years. All this is under him.
Honestly, um.
He only cares about his children.
I hate the whole political, I'm hearing out by the roots like we did that it is. I don't wanna let it influence me, wanna get rid of all of the mechanisms of corruption in our society at this point. That's, that's what I'm running on, that's what you're voting for, if you vote for me.
Honestly, I'm voting for Henry. I'm not even myself.